Okay, it is now two minutes after six and welcome everybody. We're trying to get everything geared up for our third and final public hearing on this, not the decision, but the thinking process that Loganville is thinking of opting out of H.Bill 581, which is a bill that we do not think is a very good bill. And if you sign in, you're in forever. So with that said, I'll let Mr. Roberts come up as city manager.
I'm gonna let Natalie do this one.
Okay, go for it. And at the end, this is an open hearing. At the end, everyone who wants to speak on it will have three minutes and we'll go from there.
You gotta give me more preparation than that, sir.
Make sure you got the mic on.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is the third and final public hearing for House Bill 581. As you're aware, we talked about this last Thursday night at 6:00 PM, Monday night at 6:00 PM, and tonight will be the third and final required by state law, at which you will take a vote on this during the council meeting tonight later on. So I'll go through this pretty quick. If you have any questions, you can stop me along the way. And the audience will save their questions till the end. We'll open up the public hearing. If you come up here and speak, please state your name and your address for the record for the minutes and ask your question. So House Bill 581, it's a bill that was introduced past January of this year that caps the assessments of property for homestead exemptions to a maximum of 3%. It's based on the State Revenue Commissioner CPI. It could be any variation of 0 to 3%. So that's the, this is kind of the impacts it has. With this bill, they knew that property tax and authorities would be affected by this. So they introduced, they changed the law to have a second scent sales tax. It's called FLOST. It's the floating local option sales tax. It's offset property tax. The issue with this bill is if one entity in your county opts out, it's automatically for all of them that it's either all or none. So as we know, all the taxing authorities in Walton County have opted, intent to opt out. On the Gwinnett side, I believe half of the cities in the county has planned to opt out. But you would have to go see their, their legal body and see what they finally approve. We had to advertise the intent to opt out. That's the language is set by state law in this bill. So the bill also says we gotta have three public hearings, just as we would with any tax increase. We had to advertise it on our website, which we have done. We have to run it in the legal organ, which is Walton Tribune for us, which we have done a week prior to every meeting. So it has ran in all three papers, the website, and we'll have to certify that. And now all this has to be turned in by March 1st to the state of Georgia. If it passes, we'll work on that with Paul next week to get it turned in if it is approved to opt out. If you do not opt out, you're automatically opt in forever. That's what the bill says. So it's either you opt out now in this short little window, or you're in it forever. We've talked about several things that could come if this bill is changed by legislative, but we don't know. They have talked about extending it, but to this day, we still don't know if that's gonna happen. But we only have less than a couple of weeks to do this. February 28th, I believe, is the last workday before March 1st. So any questions so far? I know I'm moving fast, but we kind of discussed this last two times pretty in depth. The next slide is taken from the ACCG and the GMA. Those are the entities that either your county's part of or either their city's part of. We are in the Georgia Municipal Association. They did support this bill. And the reason for that, that I got was what was the best of the bill that they could get. So wasn't a very confidence reason why they did it, but that's what I was told. I believe half of the cities I know of in Gwinnett, like I said, is opting out, and all the cities in Walton are planning to opt out. So what this bill does is it takes the tax burden from the property residents, the homestead properties, and kind of shifts it. And what I mean by that is the homes, non-homestead properties will still get hit with assessments potentially, plus the tax millage increase if it is increased. Like I said before, you mess with the city's digest for its homestead, it's 50% of the total digest that affects us greatly. We're heavily dependent on property tax for funding the general fund budget. That's why they even say in here that it's, you know, it's gonna put pressure on the millage rate, which means if y'all raise the millage rate to bring in more money, you have to do the same thing we're doing now every single time. So just know that.
Danny, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
We, I truly believe this bill came about because somebody, somewhere in the state, took advantage of the increase, huge increases in home appraisals over the last few years. And the folks down in the capital probably got an earful from those people. I really truly believe that. How have we handled taxes in our city over the last few years?
So every year since 2018, we do know the, the value of houses have went up, but we do what's called a rollback. And what that is, is when the digest comes out from the tax assessor's office, they give us a number of what the property valuation was for the reassessed value. That has a number. That number correlates to the millage rate. So wherever that went up, the millage rate has to be reduced by that to not produce more revenue for the city. If we accept the rollback rate, which we have for, since 2018, it's not a tax increase. If we do not accept the rollback rate and keep it the same, even though we're not moving that millage, it's still considered a tax increase because you're producing more revenue because the valuation of your house have went up. So that's why we constantly have been reducing the millage rate. So now we're a little over nine mills, almost 10 mills, the Walton side, 8.83 on the Gwinnett side. So that's how the rollback works.
Is that the highest it's ever been?
No, the highest it's ever been was in 2017, 18. We went up to 12.32 mills, I believe. Can't quote me on that, but around 12 mills. And that was, you know, the first time we raised taxes in quite a while.
And who makes the decision on the millage rate?
The city council does.
Okay, very good. Thank you, city council.
So like I said, if you fix the homestead value, then you're gonna be adjusting with the millage rate. Because at the end of the day, we still gotta keep the same revenue if we wanna keep the same services. Just like in your home and businesses, we've all seen inflation. We've all seen prices of everything go sky high. Well, we gotta keep up with that with our revenue. There's a lot of revenues that we can't control. Some of those revenues are like sales tax. We can't control how many people goes out and buys a bottle of water, or this, or that. We get, that's our, like I said, our second largest producing revenue is what's called LOST, L-O-S-T, local option sales tax. That can be seen on your tax bill as a direct correlation of your millage rate. If we didn't have LOST, you can see on your tax bill, it'll say LOST equivalent. And I believe this year, this past year, it was a little over three mills. So if we didn't have that million point eight, $1.8 million, your millage rate would technically be three mills more. So instead of nine, it would be 12 mills. So we had to show that by state law on your tax bill, what LOST has reduced the property taxes by. Gwinnett County does not have LOST, but Walton County does. That's a 10-year special tax district that we all worked together. As you all know, in 2022, it was, came time to renew it. We came to the very last month of approving it, and we had to seed a little bit. We had to go back. We had to give some more money to the county, ordering them to get them to agree. We walked away with a 30% for all the cities, 70% for the county, even though we argued that the city of Loganville and the city of Monroe probably produces most of the sales tax in Walton County because that's where all the retail is. Not saying that others, unincorporated parks in Walton County doesn't have retail, but all your Walmarts, grocery stores are in the cities, so.
Can I ask you a question while you're on that?
Yes.
On LOST? Um, can you help me to understand if, if Gwinnett County doesn't have LOST, why do the residents that live in Gwinnett County have a lower millage rate than the residents of Walton County?
They have more of the commercial that produces more revenue on that side, your businesses. And it's just a way that the, it's a way that the digest works out for Walton County. So there's a set number, and I have to reduce it by what the county says, based on growth, based on reassessed value. So some years, Gwinnett has a lot higher reassessed value than Walton did, so I had to reduce it lower. So that's why we have two different millage rates.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, where was I? Any other questions on this, where I change the slide? And we put these slides in here so y'all can see, this is not something I added just to show y'all to, you know, this is something that came from these associations, many lawyers that worked on this. It just shows you're here, that it's gonna, the effects of the floating homestead increases over time. You know, you could see cities that have a higher millage rate. We certainly don't wanna increase that millage rate. I can tell the audience that I've never had a city council in my tenure here tell me to increase the millage rate. They've always told me to reduce it, so. But your assessments are done by the county, not by the cities. I know you all know that. Some property goes up higher than others, but for the citywide, it's based on a percentage. And that's what we reduce, the millage rate. Because some people say, well, yeah, my property value went up and my taxes went up. That could be true. And the reason for that is your neighbor's house may not have been assessed that year, but yours were, or was. So the countywide, it may went up 4%, but yours made it 10%. So it's a citywide production, not per house. So I hope that makes sense. Millage rate and the rollback. Yep. So when we get the digest from the county, it's one number, right? So what the law says is all property has to be evaluated within three-year window in the county. So the tax assessor doesn't evaluate everybody's property in one year. It can be broke up over three years. I don't know how Walton County does it, but the state law says it's gotta be done within three years. So let's say the subdivision you live in may have been reassessed this year, but your neighbors down the street may not have been. But when I get the digest, it tells me that the reassessed value in the city of Loganville means new current houses was reassessed, say, at $10 million increase. So I have to take that $10 million and divide it by the, what's called a millage equivalent to come up with that same number. So wherever that mill is, so like in Loganville, one mill, say, equals $600,000. So I had to reduce it, that millage number, to offset that $10 million of growth. So it may be .5 mills. So then I reduce the millage rate by .5 to being in compliance with state law. But your property may have went up 30%. So it's based off your value of your house at 40%. So that's why we look at citywide, not just individual partials, because we couldn't do Next slide is talking about FLOST, which we don't need to kind of spend time on it. It's a mute point since the county has to opt out. Next slide is just gonna show you what this tax bill would do to the city budget on year one. It would reduce it by $89,000. That number grows afterwards. Like I said, if you was to pass this, it wouldn't be detrimental years one, two, and three, but years five and on, it could be detrimental where you would be raising the millage rate to bring that revenue in. As I said last Thursday, you know, people say, well, just cut the budget. You know, it's just a simple term that people use. But what I did was I took the entire general fund budget, and I took everything out of there except for personnel costs and things that you legally have to fund, like the payment on this building, fuel. And I took everything out except for those things. Even took the ammunition out for the police officers. Out of a $16 million budget, I can only reduce it by $1.7 million. And you'll see in another slide where this would cost us $3 million if this was, went in effect in 2021. These are real numbers. These are not made up numbers. That's what we're talking about. That's the gravity of the situation. We are heavily dependent on property taxes because that's who we are. But we cannot set our millage rate by utilities because we only have one utility. Technically, we have two sanitation, but we only transfer about $400,000 to the general fund to offset taxes. And sewer doesn't transfer anything because we're using their money to fix issues, so they don't have extra funds to transfer over. But y'all also said we wanna do something for the voters because the voters voted for this. So what came out of that was looking at increasing our homestead exemption. City Loganville is the only city in Walton County that has a homestead exemption for the cities. You have your county exemption, but you also have a city homestead. And currently, it's at $2,000. And we talked about increasing that to 5,000. This figure here shows you what I was just talking about over three years. This is, if this bill went into effect in 2021, and the growth only raised 3% versus what it actually did, we would have lost 2.0, I can't see it, $311 million. Can you zoom in on that, please? So those numbers up top is the homestead-only numbers. So homestead property, that's not commercial, that's not rental property, that's not agriculture. That is only what we're talking about in this bill. And to a tune of, in 2024, we had $304 million worth of property value. That's what it's rated at. You can see the increases from year to year. 22% it went up, 27% and then 6.6%. So if you look at the millage rate, that millage rate changed by that. But that also has new growth, so it'll be half of that actually. So new growth is not counted into rollback. I hope I ain't losing y'all. It's extremely complicated. But the net digest is the third column, 493 million in '22, 581 million in '23, and 642 million in 2024. That's what the city's property is worth in the city of Loganville and Walton County alone. Of that 642 million, 304 million of that is homestead property, which is 47.5% of the digest. You affect that number, you're gonna affect real numbers. That's, that's, that's why this slide's there. And this came from Walton County's tax commissioner's office. So I jumped ahead of myself and talked about the 2,000 exemption, but this is where it talks about. So currently, we have 2,700 properties that are homestead. Right now, that's costing us about $51,000 a year that we do not collect, that we give back in credits for homestead. If we increased that by 5,000, the first year, it would be 129,000 and some change. And that number continues based on, that's based on the millage rate and the number of homestead property. So any one of those numbers move, it changes that number. But as of today, that's what that number would look like. If you decided you wanted to increase 5,000, that's something that you would have to, as a council, direct Paul to draft a resolution to the local legislation at the state. It has to go before them for approval. This homestead has been in place since 1975, the $2,000 one. Any questions on that? That's it. I'm not gonna get into other jurisdictions. We talked about the county, but if anybody wants questions, I just don't wanna speak for other organizations. But I believe they're having their follow-up meetings coming up, I believe, I think, this week or next week, those should be done. Y'all have any questions for me? I know that was a very exciting lecture.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone here that would like to have three minutes to share their thoughts on this, please feel free. And you're back again. Good for you. Good for you.
Edorcha Burks, 904 Southford Drive. Good evening, Mayor, city council members, and Loganville resident. To my knowledge, correct me if I'm wrong, Loganville is opting at the current moment for House Bill 581. We're proposing that we opt out of this bill, but I don't see the benefit in opting out. We have a cost of living crisis now. Opting out increases property taxes for homeowners that benefit from this exemption. Opting out gives no reassurance of a tax credit for the thousands of homeowners that rely on this exemption, especially residents who are elderly that own their own homes and are working with a fixed income. A property tax increase can have many Loganville residents facing the possibility of losing their homes because they can't afford to pay property taxes. And in these unsettling times, it is the last thing that anyone wants to worry about. Opting out to our military veterans that are disabled, this is a betrayal. These veterans need these exemptions. Many have given 20-plus years of honorable service to protect our country, to keep us safe, so we can have this city council meeting. So how can we turn our backs on them? To the families that are starting a family or raising children, even grandchildren, cost of living is extremely expensive now. Our primary residence is our safe space. We already worry about the rising cost of electricity bill, gas bill, childcare, food, and just the basic necessities that opting out is not beneficial. Loganville is a growing, rich, diverse city. We are 45 minutes to an hour away from the major city, Atlanta, which is growing and changing the film industry as well as supporting thousands of entrepreneurs. Loganville is going to have many developers looking into investing into this city due to its proximity to Athens and Atlanta. More subdivisions, more commercial space, more activities, more richness is going to bring more revenue to Loganville. So yes, I am in favor of growing Loganville in a positive and productive way for everyone. These investors, developers, see the potential that our city has, and we must remember this. We do not need to opt out of homestead exemption to ease taxes on renters or developers. They will not invest in Loganville if they don't see income potential and growth for themselves.
Thank you. Your three minutes are up. Sorry, dear. Anyone else that'd like to speak, you have three minutes.
Can I add a minute real quick?
Huh?
May I add to those? So there is no tax increase that we're proposing. What we're proposing is to keep it the same. I agree with you on the growth. So the growth that we've had here is what's been able to reduce the millage rate, which means reduces your tax bill. So we're not proposing to do any type of tax increase. What we're proposing is opting out to keep the decision-making at this level, not the Atlanta level. That's another thing this bill does. I don't know if I said that. But if you don't like your property tax or your millage rate or your assessments, you can call Walton County Tax Assessor, Gwinnett County Tax Assessor, and you can appeal it. But I don't know if you're gonna be able to call the Capitol and talk to the governor or legislation, but you can talk to these people here because they do it all the time. So that's, that's another big thing. So the veterans, the veterans, if you're 100% disabled, they don't pay anything, right? So that is an exemption that's currently in place.
But it has a cap.
Yeah, it has a cap?
Every year, it has a cap.
Yeah.
So if you have a $500,000 house.
You had to come up there.
Anybody that's 100% disabled has to file that with the county, and it does come over to us. But set by the state is a cap amount. So if you have a $500,000 house and we only tax 40% of that 500,000, if the cap was 117,000 this year and you had some remaining, you would pay the remaining percent. But that's all that you pay as 100% disabled.
So none of that changes with this bill or if we opt out? None, nothing happened. If we opt out, we'll continue business as we have forever, or ever since I can remember. So I hope that helps answer your question.
Okay, Ron? Your three minutes is just about up.
They used it, did they use up my minutes? My name is Ron Chubb. I live at 956 Village View Circle here in Loganville, Georgia. Let me say, Mr. Mayor and council members, first and foremost, I voted in favor of House Bill 581 when it first came out. And I guess I've seen it one time or saw it one time, that the only thing, I guess, that caught my eye was that it was gonna be a cap on the increases on property tax assessments and on homestead property, which looked good to me at the time. And as more and more, as I look at the House Bill and at the public meetings that we've had, I've come to conclusion that, and I think the city council has pretty well, has made their mind up to that we're probably gonna opt out of it, but anyway. But as a senior living in a 55-plus community, I bought into this community in 2004. At that time, my taxes were $400, which sounded great. This year, my taxes were a little over $1,200. And I guess I'm kind of griping in a way, but you know, back in 2004, I still paid for my electric bill, my water bill, my sewage bill, my garbage, my garbage pickup, and my HOA dues. But you know, all of those have increased over the years. Every year, they kept going up. I don't know the benefits I'm getting out of the tax increases or property increases that we're seeing each year. I don't know the benefits I'm getting out of the tax increases or property increases that we're seeing each year. I do ask that the city, and there were some things on the presentation that Danny made about, we're getting a $2,000 homestead exemption today. I would like to see that in the future, that we increase this to the $5,000 homestead exemption for the properties, or qualified home properties in here. I just think that we need some help with our property taxes today. If we're not gonna be able to, and I understand the values of our property going up each year, but, and Danny, I was here when we increased the millage rate back in, and I was all for increasing the millage rate back in several years ago because we needed to keep up with our pay for our police officers and our first responders and whatever, and all the city employees at that time. And over the years, we've been able to roll back some of that, and I really appreciate what the council has been able to do over the years. But we just still, again, as senior citizens living here in the city of Loganville, we need some help with our.
Good job, Ron.
Taxes.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Let me ask one real quick question. I need for Danny to clarify because I was questioning to me. I assume this, the county is gonna opt in or opt out of it also.
Yes.
Does our homestead exemption still stay the same with the county and the city at that time? Is that correct? No, if we opt out, does our homestead exemption stay the same? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ron. Hey, anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hello, city council. My name is Albert Burks. Excuse me. 904 Southford Drive. My lovely wife, Mrs. Burks. I, like my wife said, I served in the military for 20 years. Two tours in Iraq, bombed, blown up. I'm 100% total and permanent disability. So the homestead exemption really do help my family since I am really the only one working because my wife takes care of the family. So as taxes, and if we've been, we moved to Loganville roughly about three, four years ago. And we moved here because it's close to Atlanta, and the housing market was great here compared to everybody else. And I understand that if we stay in, that it's gonna lose money. And so my thing is economic development. If we bring in businesses that those of us that live here go to Atlanta or Athens to do, that bring the money here to Loganville. Loganville has a lot of open areas that it's just wasted. Like I live, 581, there's that what's supposed to be Piedmont Hospital. It's three years, it's just been sitting there. Nobody's doing anything to it. So take that land and bring in, even Snellville has a crappy little movie theater. We can have a better movie theater that can bring people from Snellville, Monroe to us. So we build economic development and get developers in here that want to build up Loganville, that brings in more money. So that even if we do have 581, it's not a lot of property tax getting passed over to the commercial or the non-homestead residents. I see a lot of elderly people here, just like me. They need this. They need that tax break. There's a lovely elderly woman that is right down the street from me, own her home clear and free, but she's on a fixed income. And if her tax bill is constantly raising year after year, I would hate to see that elderly lady have to sell her home that she loves living here in Loganville because she can't afford to live here anymore. It'd be like, you know what, we might as well move back to New York. That's the way it's looking at. And that's what, you know, we come from the north. We came from New York, New Jersey because it was just too expensive to live up there. The housing was, market was horrible. But what we got down here for $400,000 is a shoebox up there. And if I'm gonna pay taxes that I would pay in New York, New Jersey, down here in Loganville, I might as well move back up there. At least I have a city that can do everything I want to do. I feel like when I want to spend my money, I'd rather spend it here in Loganville than have to give Atlanta my money or Athens my money, or even Snellville my money. But we got as a community, and as a city council, I'm asking and begging you guys, bring in businesses that wants us to spend our money here in Loganville. That's, I don't know if my three minutes are up or not, but that's my.
Very good. Thank you. Your wife's applauding you. How long is it gonna take you to find her a job? And Ron, Ron, I apologize to you that we messed up your taxes in 2004. Just kidding. Anyone else? I just wanted you to know I was listening.
Sounds like you need to run for city council then. August, it opens up?
Okay, anyone else that'd like to come up and speak? Okay, with that said, and seeing none, we will close this public hearing, and a vote will be taken tonight. So we will make the vote and we will move on from there. With that said, this meeting is over. Could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? We have a motion. We have a second. We have a motion, second. All in favor say aye. Those opposed? Meeting is closed.